I did. Okay. Hmm. Okay, so maybe I should just quickly read Psalms five. Again, just to refresh our memories that. Then we can just continue from there. So Psalms chapter five from verse one. Says, give ear to my words, O Lord, consider my meditation. Give it to the voice of my cry, my king and my God, for to you I will pray. My voice you shall hear in the morning, O Lord. In the morning I will direct it to you and I will look up. In the morning I will direct it to you and I will look up. So now verse four. For you are not a God who takes pleasure in wickedness, nor shall evil dwell with you. Verse five, the boastful shall not stand in your sight, you eat all workers of iniquity. Verse six, you shall destroy those who speak falsehood. The Lord abhors the bloodthirsty and deceitful man. Verse seven, but as for me, I will come into, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. In fear of you I will worship toward your holy temple. Verse eight, lead me, O Lord, in your righteousness because of my enemies. Make your wish straight before my face. Verse nine, for there is no faithfulness in their mouth. Their inward part is destruction, their truth is an open tomb. They flatter with their tongue, but then pronounce them guilty, O God. Let them fall down by their own counsels. Cast them out in the multitude of their transgressions. For they have rebelled against you. Verse eleven, but let all those rejoice who put their trust in you. Let them ever shout for joy because you defend them. Let those also who love your name be joyful in you. Then verse twelve, for you, O Lord, who bless the righteous. With favor you will surround them as a shield. Okay, so now that's the. So we are going to, so now let's, let's take it from verse four now, we stopped at verse three last week. So verse four says, you are not a God who takes pleasure in wickedness. Nor shall any evil dwell with you. I don't know, I hope our strong Bible, Strong's, yes, our Strong's Bible is open, so we can check. The meanings. So, okay, in the Strong's Bible now. Okay, we've, we've done good. Okay, for thou art not a good, good, yes, is um. The Almighty. Okay, you were just talking about the Almighty Good actually. That adds pleasure, so pleasure. Means pleased with delight, desire, favor. Pleased. Willing, wish. And um. Wickedness. Means you're wrong. Iniquity. So that is, for thou art not a God that has pleasure in wickedness. Neither shall evil, so evil, yeah, according to Strong's Bible, is bad. Um. Calamity, distress, evil. Grief, um, and the likes, I guess it means what, exactly what we think it means actually. Then dwell with the dwell. Dwell here means to, okay, to sojourn. As a guest, also to fear. As in a strange place, to gather for hostility. Afraid. Abide, assemble, be afraid, to remain. To sojourn. Okay, so. For this verse, I say, for thou art not a God that hath pleasure in wickedness. Neither shall evil dwell with thee. So from this, um. Okay, so if you read, if you read the N L T version, it says, oh God, you take no pleasure in wickedness. You cannot tolerate the sins of the wicked. It does, it does, um, is a testament to the character of God, that's what's. Okay, it's the Psalm of David, so that's what David was talking about, he was talking about. God's character, was talking about the character of God, and God takes no pleasure in wickedness. And he cannot tolerate the sins of the wicked. Yeah, and now the wicked here is, according to our Strong's Bible. Wickedness is, okay, people that do iniquity, workers of iniquity. Yeah, people that do wrong, that's what he's talking about. So they're saying God takes no pleasure in wickedness, and he does not tolerate the sins of the wicked. So, um, just to buttress a bit. He says, oh God, you take no pleasure in wickedness, it means. So whenever, see, it still boils down to, it comes down to, um. Why Jesus came, Jesus came to devour us from, um, from sin. From sin, then to request our loss to God, so that was the whole point why Jesus came because. He said, wickedness, wickedness lies in the act of everything else. It's just how it is, it's just what it is, is, is like, um. So I, I, just to digress a bit, I was. I, I was watching, I watched an interview recently, like two days ago. So it was, they, they was talking about why, that why should we, okay, why should we tell? People that are gays, people that believe that they are gay, or they were born as, they were born as. Gay, or they were born transgender, or they were born, um. Whatever the other letters are. And those that believe they were born as an animal, so good, and the person was like, okay, why should we tell these people to? Why should we tell these people, why should we want these people to change, since this is how they were created? And the man that was responding gave a very interesting response. And he was like, okay. That, that's why in the old character of God, in your point of. The cross, your point of following God is to deny ourselves. Because all man, every, every man, every man is born selfish. So. As a character, when, when they give back to everyone, they have some inherent traits that each of us. Were born with, or developed as we continue to grow, that is where we are still without Christ now. Like human beings are inherently selfish normally. So when you say because I was born selfish. I should continue, or I should keep being selfish all the days of my life. Or say, say for instance, I did a bit extreme, but. Say, I was born and from my childhood, I felt like I, I was born to kill people. Or say, I like, I like killing people, I feel like it's just an inherent trait. So would I say because I was, that's how I was born. I should continue at killing people? I don't even get what I'm saying, so. The man was just saying that, okay, um. Oh, okay, I was just checking the chat, okay, so the man was just saying that, um. The fact that we're born is happening with. Doesn't mean we have to continue in that lifestyle, that's the whole point of, of, of. Why Jesus came, that's the whole point of trying to live like Christ, that's the whole point of working with God because. Your point of working with God is to deny yourself, and we used to take off, take on the life of God. Take on the character of God, bear the fruits of the spirit. Those are the fruits that are associated with a renewed life. So I, I, I just digressed a bit to talk about this character, we say it takes no pleasure in wickedness. And it cannot tolerate the sins of the wicked, so, um. Yeah, exactly, said your point of being born again is another bit, exactly, your point of being born again is to. Put our name to the old way of life, or continuing the newness of life that. Jesus Christ brought, or Jesus Christ has given us, so that's it, and so. The next, the next line is very interesting, I'm reading N L T, and I say you do not, you cannot tolerate. You can't tolerate the sins of the wicked. So does that mean you can, you can tolerate the sins of the righteous? It's just a question. Of course, can the righteous thing? Can a righteous man sing? I guess there's another way to, that's another. That's another way to, that's another way to look at it, because most times when I read my Bible, I try to just, okay. This is what the Bible is saying. So this is what the Bible is saying, I just try to. Get as much as I get, as I can get from a particular verse. So the, but God, the Bible is saying, David is saying now, talking about the character of God, that he cannot tolerate the sins of the wicked. Okay, all well and good. So first question, is this saying you can tolerate the sin of the righteous? Now, the second question is, can a righteous man sing? So now, the Bible says, seven times a righteous man shall fall. Seven times he rises again, is that falling there, is it, is this thing, is this thing the Bible was referring to? Because I see most times, you, 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 you Christians, and. I'm not just talking about generic Christian, even myself now, there are times where you ask for forgiveness. Seven days in a week. Like you, you sleep, you wake up, oh God. Eh, I bless you away, go there. Yeah, I have fallen short of your glory. I bless you for me, although the Bible says, all I've seen and I've fallen short of the glory of God. But the falling short of the glory of God was before Christ, like after you accepted Christ. You are no longer, you are no longer falling short of the glory of God, because we have become the righteousness of God in Christ. So, so the following that the Bible was talking about, that righteous man falls, is this thing you're referring to? So whenever, whenever I, I remember this question, I remember something my old. I think in ninth, I said I was in ninth, I said I was in school. When I was in ninth, there was something a preacher said one time, he said, um. He said, um. If, eh, he said, okay now, it is normal for a dog to bark. If you go somewhere and they have a dog, and the dog is barking, it is normal. He said, but when you go somewhere and the human being is backing, then you know that something is wrong. Because it is in the nature of the dog to bark. It is not in the nature of humans to bark. So what he was driving at is, it is in the nature of sinners to sin. So when a righteous man, when he, when a righteous man commits, or does something that he's not supposed to do. It is not his nature. When, when a Christian does something that is not supposed to do. It is not his nature, it means something is wrong. Yet, so. Going back to the question I asked, that, can I, can a righteous man? Can God tolerate the sins of a righteous man? Okay, fantastic, in the group. So somebody posted Psalms, right, or rather posted Psalms one verse five, he said, therefore. Young godly shall not stand in the judgment. Not sinners in the congregation of the righteous, exactly what we read, if you were following us. From the very first meeting, I think the second meeting, we'll go to. Psalms five, and Abacukon three, he said, why do you show me iniquity? And cause me to see trouble, for the plundering and violence are before me, there is strife. And contention arises. That's Abacukon three, these are just references to the verse, the, the verse we just read now, talking about the fact that. Um, that's Psalms five verse four. That God takes no pleasure in wickedness, and he cannot tolerate the sins of the wicked. So, is that, that's all, what I was just, what I was just trying to buttress is the fact that. It is not in the nature of Christians to sin, that is why. The Bible puts it as a righteous man shall fall. So we make mistakes, yeah, fine, we make mistakes, and we learn from our mistakes. And we correct, we teach, and we instruct ourselves on the gospel, because if you read Psalm one one nine. Every single thing that, I don't know, I can't remember if it was David that wrote that particular Psalm. But I guess they were different authors, if you read Psalm one one nine, everything that. Majority of what he was talking about is keeping the precepts or the word of God in it, that, yeah, the verse that I said. The word I have trusted in my heart that I may not sin against you, so. A righteous man can make mistakes, but the word of God guides, the word of God can bring him back in check. The word of God would, would also, um. Serve as, um, guardrails, guardrails, so that it does not. Go beyond the word of God and be his guide. Yeah, I don't even get what I'm saying, so. So God, you cannot tolerate the sins of the wicked, so now let's go to verse five, it says. Therefore, the proud, now reading N L T, it says, therefore the proud may not stand in your presence. For you eat all wood to evil. So let's go to Strong's. Oh, okay, so N L T uses the proud. So King James uses, and the foolish shall not stand in thy sight. Thou etest all workers of iniquity. So now the foolish, N L T uses the proud. So the foolish, according to Strong's, foolish here means, um. Okay. Foolish here means, wow. It means to be clear, to shine, to make sure, to boast. To be camaressly foolish, to rave. To positively celebrate, to boast. To glory. To giving marriage, wow. To shine. Who would have thought?
Sorry, I have to find a corner, because I didn't express.
Well, this, this, this is shocking, this is shocking.
Say sorry, but I don't know when I can get this opportunity, um. Interesting that the way that you buy, you know, explain it together, or see, it's very important. Yeah, we can. But like, it's interesting, kind of. And also to say proud, like this is, uh, you see. That you should describe. Like it is, it is what you.
Hello, your, your network is breaking now, I can't hear you again.
It would say, actually, that is, it is what you're talking about, as in what the Bible uses to describe ungodly people, like you think of.
Yes.
And, or, the wicked people are people that, that, they want to go out, or do rituals, or steal money, collect. If you're being, uh, foolish, and it says proud, like, it is interesting, and what you're. Like, the way that the Bible describes the ungodly.
Yes, true, because sometimes we just, we, we have this view of believing that, oh, when the Bible says ungodly. Just look at Amorabas, we look at them. People that do the extreme, they are looking at extremities, like, oh, the rapists. The killers, the mudras, but the proud. You can be a Christian, I'd be very proud. All the time you say, you're ungodly. Yeah, so you've learned one thing today now. And the thing, so when the Bible says, God receives the proud, you don't care about God receives the foolish. Someone that doesn't give his heart to wisdom. That's an ungodly answer. I learnt that one today now. Yeah. So, says, it means there is a God in us that must true, and without it, we are still his enemies. Wow, that's deep. If you think about it, there is a God in us that must true. God is not dull, God is not dull, God is not foolish. So whenever you portray a character that is outside, the character of God, that is outside. The character of Christ, you're ungodly, because you are not revealing Christ. The Bible says, let, we should let our light through forth. Shine before me that you may see our good works and glorify God. So if you do anything that is not glorifying God, if you do anything that is short of good works. Yeah, you know, now you understand. That's who, if they say, you've been excellent in your business, you've been excellent in your academics. You've been excellent in whatever it is you are doing, is a sign that there is a God in you. Exactly, because the Holy Spirit is not dumb. Yeah. The Holy Spirit is not dumb, we have the Holy Spirit. So if there is anything, if there is anything in your life that you believe that, oh, this one cannot be good. Then you need to work on it, yeah. There's something in your life, and there's something that you feel like you are portraying, and you feel like, ah, this cannot be the character of God. Like, 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 um. I didn't want to use, um, they let, they let us go to the lion scene and all that. It can be as simple as not being able to, not being able to, not being able to. It's, yeah, it's funny. I was listening to a message of our pastor this week, and he was talking about, um. He, I don't, I can't remember, I think it was this week I was listening to it, and he was. Talking about how he went to Yuki one time, and because he didn't want to ask special. He got lost for like two hours. Just because he refused to ask for direction, just he didn't want to seem stupid. And it's funny, because that in itself can be a form of pride, you don't know, it's as basic as that. It is as, it's as simple as that, okay, why, why don't you want to ask for direction? Why, you know you don't know where you are going, you are not sure where you are going, but you don't want to, I do it too sometimes. When you walk a certain distance, and you see that you are going the wrong way, then you bring out your phone and pretend you want to make a phone call. And you turn back, instead of just asking, guy, I'm lost, why, just because you don't want them to. Don't want you to assume that, this guy doesn't know what he's doing. As, if you look at it, that's pride. So now, let's go back to, let's go back to our Strong's. So the foolish, they call foolish, they shall not stand in thy sight, so stand. According to Strong's. Means to present themselves. Okay, to stand. To stand still, stand up, withstand, stand fast. Remaining, mainly to present yourself. Okay, so not being able to trust God is a sin, self-righteousness is a sin, murmuring is a sin. And again, God detests these things, again and again, he shows us in the scriptures. God help us, that's true. It's, that's something that we don't even realize that, you know, you read the Old Testament, and you think, you realize that you are the worst of the worst. I feel like diesel light compared to us now, those guys, they have some level of. No one's able to foot on this wheel, but I feel like we are worst. Because at least they did it, and they knew that what they were doing was not good. We are doing it, and we still think we are, we are holy people, as we are murmuring. Self-righteousness. First up, in fact, self-righteousness is one of the major reasons why a lot of people. Are turning away from the church. Because I feel like the church is one of the most judgmental. God is helping us, yeah, the church is one of the most judgmental guardians you can enter, I'm telling you as a Christian. God is helping us, God is helping us, and God will continue to help us to change these narratives. And we hope us, because that's the good. Okay, now let's continue to. In thy sight, okay, that is, the foolish will not stand in thy sight, sight here, there's, um. I, that countenance, okay, I guess it means what he, what we think he means actually, presence. Yeah. So thou etest, it's, okay, enemy, you see now. It's not just that God is, he's like, he's regards people that does such things as his enemy. So it's a strong definition, enemy. Or foe. Yeah, so once you do these things, you're an enemy of God, that's just what it means, once you do this, you're an enemy of God. He said that, etest all workers of iniquity. So workers here means, um. To do, to make systematically or habitually, to practice. To ordain. To work, okay, evil, to commit, yeah, so. That is, the foolish will not stand in their sight. Because the workers of iniquity are enemies of God, that's what this verse is saying. Uh, iniquity here means, um. To come to not. To exact oneself usually in vain. Oh, but this is, this one, this particular, to exact oneself. Vivally in vain. That's iniquity. Say vanity is iniquity. Wickedness is iniquity. Specifically to an idol. Affliction, false idol, mischief. Mourners, sorrow. Unjust, unrighteous, vain, vanity, wickedness. That's what the Bible regards as iniquity. What ever caught my eye properly, and what caught my attention most is. To exact oneself usually in vain, or to come to not. As iniquity. So that, in this verse, that's the same. The foolish or the proud. Shall not, the foolish and the proud shall not stand in thy presence, because God considers. These people that accept themselves to nothingness. That exact, he said, God, because let's consider these people, I'm not reading what's. I'm reading these translations now, translations from Strong's, it says, God considers. These people that exerts themselves usually in vain, he considers them as enemies. This verse, I feel like this verse is very, 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 very self-explanatory. The proud will not stand in your presence, for you eat all wood to evil. Evil is exacting yourself usually in vain. Evil is exacting yourself to nothingness. You, evil is vanity. And vanity is deep, it is not, I know most times when we, you know the fun part, I realized that, sorry. I realize, it's like I'm digressing a lot, I realize that a lot of people read Bible, I do actually understand. The words, have you ever, have you ever checked the dictionary meaning for vanity? You know, especially if you read King James from when we were small, I realized that there are a lot of these Bible verses that I memorized. That I don't actually know the meaning. It's funny, especially if you, if you use King James when you're growing up, your mom used to quote King James, so. Everybody in, everybody in your house, I want to open the dictionary and check. Okay, so, everybody in your house could read King James, I'm telling vanity. Okay, now see, vanity is that which is vain, futile or worthless, that which is of no value, use or profit. That which is of no value, that's what the Bible was saying, that, that those that accept, they exact themselves. To nothingness, he said, that which is vain. He said, that, that Strong said, those that exact themselves usually in vain, and this was vanity is. Vanity said, those, that which is of no value, use or profit. Excessive pride. In all admiration of one's own ability, appearance, or achievement. This is deep, look at it, thank you, thank you, I said I thought vanity was emptiness. You see, vanity is not just emptiness, once you depend on your own ability, other than God, is vanity, and you are God's enemy. It's as simple as that. That's simple, I guess it is, is what we're ready to get, we're ready to get. Once you believe in your ability. Once you believe in your ability, and it's funny, why, it's funny, because sometimes we can get easily carried away. Really, when we are planning, and sometimes we can just plan, plan, and leave God out of the picture. And you don't realize that he's already depending on your own ability, he's, he's not, you're an enemy of God like that. I'm telling you, exactly, we all need to repent and ask God for mercy, because we are guilty of this. Okay, look at, let me give us a very simple instance. Okay, let, 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 I woke up this morning, I'm like, okay. Okay, what am I going to do today? Okay, I'll wake up by, I'll wake up by six, I'm going to the gym, when I leave the gym, I'll come back. Um, okay, I would. Okay, and I, I need to go on social media, advertise my business, I need to consult some person. Advertise my business, I need to consult some person, advertise my business, I need to go online, do research on the kind of business that I want to do. Everything I've been saying now, I've not considered good ones, like, okay, oh, how does God want me to carry out, carry out this business? How does God want me to? Do this, who does God want me to call, as regarding my business, I just believe that, what, all I've been doing is, oh. Okay, this is what I want to do, this is what I want to do, I believe in my ability as an architect to design, because, yeah, I'm good. It's as basic as, um. Yeah, so by two AM, I will wake up, and we, and we eat, and we eat till like two, sometimes. Planning, I'm not saying it's bad to plan, but sometimes planning, when you plan and God, and you leave God out of your plan, it's like. You are totally, who told you that by two o'clock, you, you, you'll be able to walk to God by something, who told you that by two o'clock? Your legs will have, you will not be sick, who told you you'll be alive by two, sometimes it's as basic as that, in that, we plan and we. Um, you know the funny part is, most times we plan. And you know the funny part is, most times we plan and we plan based on our own ability, that's just what it is, and that's what planning is actually. And you are planning, you are planning based on how you believe you know to carry something out. It's like when you want to cross the road. Do you cross the road because another person is running, and because another person is crossing, if that's how you cross, you have an accident very soon. When you want to cross the road, you cross the road, number one, based on your own ability, you look at what you are wearing. Okay, will I be able to run if I'm wearing bedroom slippers? Then you look at your, your own ability, that, okay, this is my speed. This is my speed, this is how, so most times, when we cross, we request the road based on our ability, based on what we know about ourselves to cross. To run, our ability to run, our ability to do that, so it's as basic as that, most times when we plan, we plan based on our ability, that's it. When you want to carry out the task, you carry out the task based on, based on your ability, based on how you know how to do it, and the Bible is correcting us this night. It's telling us that that's vanity, and once, you see, once you are not depending on God for anything. You're an enemy, that's the bottom line. That's the bottom line. Are you depending on God for food? No. Because he is food now, I should not depend on God, and now to open my mouth and close it and chew and swallow. Yeah, I have to keep my account, so I should like depend on God for food, well, I know that I can just buy granola and ginger. Or should I, why should I depend, you know, it's, it's funny, it's, it's, this verse is just, it's, it's touching me myself, because. These are things that we don't really consider, these are things that we don't even think about, is. These are not, these are not, it doesn't look like, it doesn't look like iniquity, it doesn't look like, um. Exactly, he said, this is why we are so, this is why we do small things, we do small things because we calculate everything based on our ability. You know, it's funny, most times that when you want to rent an apartment, what is the first thing you consider? Your salary, yeah? You consider your salary, okay, I want to rent an apartment with hundred K. Hmm, so based on my calculations, based on my work, I'm able to save up for the next, for the next um year's rent in. Three months, exactly, thank you. So in three months, I can save up three hundred K. I can save up eight hundred K in four months, so that is what you are basing, the, the house you want to rent on. Not on God's ability to provide for you. So sometimes you end up in houses in situations where you are not supposed to be, because you place yourself there. You place yourself in those, in those situations, and when, when we place ourselves in those situations, we now go back to God. The, 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 because now you rented an apartment with a hundred K, because that's your ability. Unfortunately, your landlord now increased your rent to one point two million after, after you paid for the first year, so how do you renew the rent? Because now based on your own calculations, now based on your ability, you calculated for eight hundred K. And it's, it's that, it's as basic as, it's as basic as that, it's just, it's, even me going right as I'm thinking about it. Was, I've been trying to rent an apartment for a while, and the new calculation I've been doing, as in based on what I feel like I comfortably gather. To renew in, in like a year. Ah, wonderful, wonderful. We, all of us are, we are taking, we are, we are taking, we are taking, we are taking lessons, we are taking lessons and we are learning. God is helping all of us, because this one, I don't, I, you know, it's funny, because these are, these are things that we overlook. It, it doesn't look like God cares about those type of things, no. Apparently, she be God has given us the brain, you know, some people say God has given us the brain so that we don't disturb him. I had it somewhere, he was in a meeting, he was in a church meeting, and it sounded very deep, it sounded very spiritual, and God has given us wisdom, so that. You don't disturb him for some things, he has given us wisdom to do some things, that sounds like a very spiritual statement now. You know, because that's why God gave you a brain now, so that you don't need to come back to him for, for every little thing. He has given you the ability to do the things that you can do, then you come to him to meet him for the things that only him can do, wonderful. Wonderful. But now we are, we are seeing from here that God wants us to come to him at every point. It doesn't matter what level of wisdom we have, what level of wisdom he has given us. Wants us to come to him. For he wants us to depend, you see, total dependency on God, is he that, I feel like, I feel like this is why, this is why, apart from the fact that David knows. David loved God, I feel like this is another reason why David was very, very special to God, because you see, for every battle, for every victory. For everything David faced, from what we can see in the Book of Psalm, David was always coming to God. God, many I did arise against me, Lord, the Lord is my shepherd, blessed are those that be. My guy, may God rest, you know, he didn't allow God rest. Because every single complaint, every single thing, that every single thing that David passed through, he sold to God, even when he messed up, even when he messed up. He's sticking back, ah, God, I know that, I know that I have, I, I have done this, I know I have done this, God help me, God help me, God kill my enemies. Even, even the time where there was a, there's a, there's a particular song, I can't remember where again, yeah, he was complaining about why the wicked people are thriving. Why the wicked people are excellent, and he was just complaining and lamenting to God, that's how, that's how, I feel like that's how. That, not I feel, from Buddhist verse now, we are seeing that that's how Christians, that's this exactly how we should live our life. Oh, God, I'm in this talking stage, should I continue or should I stop? That's total, thank you, total dependency, total dependency on God, it's, it's course relief for every Christian. Total dependency on God. Yeah, imagine, even me, I was looking at this song before I started like, oh, is there anything that is, that is, that is, that is, I'll just be thanking God, but. Even from the two verses we read now. Father has convicted our hearts. And he's helping us, he's helping us. So like I will say, whenever we read Bible. Please, if you see words, you know, it, it came to me, there was a day I was quoting Psalm ninety one. I think it's Psalm ninety one, that he that does a significant piece of the most time, shall I, shall I do the mighty, I'll say, the Lord is my shield and my. I remember, I realized that he has saved me from the noise of pestilence, as I realized that, I had, I had no idea what noise of pestilence was, I don't know what it is. It was that day I went to check, it was just like two days ago, because I've been quoting it, I've been quoting it, and I realized that, man, what is noise of pestilence, actually? So let's not, let's be good Bible students, when you read things, especially King James. We memorize and we quote, meanwhile, we have no idea what some of those words mean, unless always, you see now, we've seen that vanity is not. Thank you. So now let's continue. So um verse, verse six. Verse six says, thou shalt destroy, okay, let me read N L T first. N L T says, you will destroy those who tell lies, the Lord detests moderates and deceivers. So now to the Strong's, it says, thou shalt destroy them that speak reason, the Lord will abhor the bloody and deceitful man. So thou shalt destroy. Okay, destroy means um to lose oneself by implication, to perish. Not escape, to fail, to cause, to make perish, to be void of, to have no way to flee. Okay, that will, that's destroy, them that speak, speak here means um. Perhaps to properly arrange. To speak rarely in a destructive sense. To answer, to appoint, to bid, to commune, to declare, to promise, to re-ask, to say, to speak. Yeah, so um to speak, to re-ask, to promise, listen. According to N L T, we know that it talked about lies, but now, listen, Strong's means falsehood, untruth. Deceitful folks, liar, yeah, lying, yes, so that's all listeners. The Lord, Lord is Jehovah, 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 yeah, the self existence of the eternal. The Lord is Lord, is the Lord that I'm talking about, abhor now means to morally detest. Abominable, to loathe. So that abhor the bloody and the deceitful, so the bloody means um, okay, yeah, modra. As it, when man, when, as that which, when shed, causes death, okay, that has blood, that's modra, of man or animal. Yeah, bloodshed rather, that's what, it's the blood is talking about, and deceitful, deceitful means fraudulent, deceit, false. Guile, subtility, treachery. Treachery. The God shall destroy them that speak lies. The Lord detests moderates and deceivers. The Lord detests moderates and deceivers. Yeah, so, yeah, becoming like a child who is dependent of an adult for all his needs, total dependency, that, no, this is a reference to what we talked about before. In the last verse, so. So now, um, this verse is saying. You will destroy those who tell lies, the Lord detests the moderates and deceivers, that's pretty straightforward, those who tell lies. You know now, at this time, it did not say the wicked would tell lies. I feel like the Bible is usually very clear. It didn't say, you know, there was a time when he was talking about these things, he was talking about the sins of the wicked. Yes. Now he's saying those, he's not, he's not saying, he didn't put, it disparies, there's no, would disparage, yeah, he's not saying. The wicked that tell lies, or the writers that tell lies, you see anybody that tell lies, yeah, I feel like that's what those means are. It's the dash and destroy, and the destroy we've seen here is cause to lose oneself, to perish, to fail, to have no way of escape. So God is saying, as many that tells lies will have no way of escape, they will perish. The Lord destroys those who tell lies, this one has nothing to do with whether you are wicked or not. That's not to do with whether you're doing iniquity or not, if you tell lies, as in this song is saying, the Lord detests moderates and deceivers. Now moderates is very extreme, those that shed blood. Those that shed, let me say innocent blood now, because, you know, there are people that, and they believe that fight and all that. Those that shed blood, moderals, now deceivers. According to Strong's. I know we read it before. You see, treachery, guile, subtility. Uh, deceit, deceit, being deceitful is, is, is not as, um, is not as, I, I feel like it's straightforward, but then it's not. On the surface, people think uh is, it's, it's, there is a level of something you need to do before it is considered deceit. I don't know, people feel like it needs to be very bad for it to be considered deceit. But then, okay, let me, let me just check the dictionary meaning of deceit, you have to be very sure, if I see. If I see what I, if I see what I'm to say. Deceit. Okay, deceit means. An act of practice intended to deceive, a trick, an act of deceiving, an act of deceiving someone. Thought of fraudulent representation of immaterial facts, yeah, so deceive. And now, I know there's, there are people that have decided that. You know, I feel like the most common one in this present time and age, and we have to close variation, is um people that travel. He said, once you do anything with a fake document, that's deceit, and I know, and I know that in Nigeria, that is um. It's like standard practice, it's not, they don't consider that one as, as a crime anymore, as long as you have affidavit. Or you, me and you, you say, you know that, that line, for as long as you can get, you know, in Nigeria, you can get affidavits on those anything. But once you do anything, once you do anything to, to deceive, once you do anything to deceive. Once you do anything, anything to deceive, as the dictionary say, a practice intended, intended to trick. An act of deceiving someone, once you do anything fraudulent, is what the Bible is talking about here. You, you marry somebody just to get green paper, that one is pretty common now, it's looking like standard practice too. It's what the Bible is talking about, that's what God, that's what David is saying, maybe you see talking about the character of God here, he said, the God we destroy. He said, he abhors, he abhors them, N L T uses the word, N L T uses the word detest. Lord detest deceivers, and you know the funny part is, it's not mean discipline, it's same group as moderates, as the same people that shed blood. So that's how serious, that's how serious the, 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 let me use crime or saying of deceit, of being the deceitful. Is, is as, we said, the moderates and the deceived. Exactly for green card. You see, in Nigeria, yeah, a lot of things where, yeah, a lot of things where we do now and then. A lot of things that we've, we've made because of how Nigeria is, or because of how, uh, let me say, because of how Nigeria is. There are a lot of things that we've been doing, you know that this Bible which is talking about, as I mentioned my practice, that's, that's, that's. To that point, as I mentioned my practice, it's deceit, it's fraud. And God abhors people that engage in such things, that doesn't look like a crime anymore, it doesn't look like anything anymore in Nigeria. Doesn't, because it's like, everybody does it, it's like standard practice for schools now, but that's what the Bible is talking about here. You know, I feel like this time is just pointing, just pointing our attentions to the little, little things that we seem to overlook, the little, little things that we seem to overlook. Lying on your C V, that one is even mad, that one is normal. They will fix it, they will make it. Is deceit. Is deceit. Because it's not true. But then, you know, the funny thing is, I've always, I've always been somebody that is um. I'm not proud to say this, but then, at least I'm learning, I, I used to, I used to. Thank you, somebody said, even claiming. To be who you are not, just so somebody can like you. Okay, I feel like this one, go, 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 this one, this particular one, go, 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 is, is serious, because to everybody is just. This one, claiming to be somebody you are not, just so that somebody else can like you, deceit. Because me, you know, you are God, and the devil know that you are pretending. Pretending to be okay in a situation that you are clearly not comfortable with, and they ask you, and you said, I'm fine, is deceit. This one, I'm even guilty of that one, because I do like stress, most times, if I feel like. Having a conversation with this person about it is too distressful, or rather just avoid it. I'm not happy with it, but, just, I just feel like this thing will be stressed, I'm just avoid it, is deceit, that's what the Bible is saying. Exactly, packaging, thank you. You know, there are terminologies that we have created to. To just make those things seem not as bad. Packaging, exactly, you know, I, yeah, I used to be somebody that believed that. It doesn't matter whether you can, you can do it or not, if they ask you, just say yes. Then look for this, I'm gonna look for how you get it done, I've always been, yeah, that's what I, I, I used to say, there are problems, there's. Can you do it? Yes, then you gotta look for how you resort it. For me and you know that you can learn it, you just want to go and learn it, so why not say, I can't, but I have somebody that can do it, is that not better? Hey, so I said, I be still, exactly, still. It's funny, what is the little, is the, is the little things, is the, is the very, very little, is the very little thing, is the, is the. And you know, the one, one that just came to my mind right now is. You having the ability to do something, and pretending that you cannot do it. That's another one, so. Not because you don't want them to stress you. Yeah, can you, that's simple as. Afan, can you make a bar, I say, no, I've never made a bar in my life. I have never made a bar in my life. Because you don't want to, you know that, once you start making a bar, that is, you'll be making a bar every night, so because you don't want to make a bar every night, you're, oh, I can't make a bar. It's deceit. It's deceit. And you know the funny part is, sometimes, people, it's funny how people can. When you are, when you, when you try to be honest, people can make it seem like you are proud. But look at every time, every time, every time, somebody, look at the life of Jesus. It was since, the Bible said, they consider it not. They consider, consider it not being to be equal with God. Is it, was it in the Bible yesterday? No one's be saying, I'll be sure. I can't remember, I can't remember that last one. Eh, no, I was trying to remember the verse, but, yeah, the, the was talking about, um. Said, um, Jesus Christ, I considered it not, I can't remember that line now, to be equal with God. Yeah, robbery, robbery, you see, sometimes, oh, do you not have to do something? Because you don't want it to seem like you are a proud person, or you feel like, uh, this guy, this guy is claiming that he knows anything, then. You know, sometimes belittling yourself, boy, is not humility, it's just deceit, it's just, you, you distributing everybody, you're deceit. Because you want to claim that you are humble. You can, you can, you can, you know, you can, you can show that you know these things, and you can still be humble, you don't have to pretend that, oh. Thank you for humility, thank you. Can you play drum? I know, I, I don't, I don't play the drums. I don't play the drums. I used to play the keyboard now, no, I don't, I don't play the keyboard, only, only play. Oh, oh, guy, oh, in my head, this one, this one is even fantastic. Yeah, the, the, the other, you play two hours every day, no. I, I can only play like ten minutes, ten, fifteen minutes maximum, meanwhile, you used to play like four, five hours every day. But because you don't want them to see, ah, this guy, this guy is very deep. Or, or, this guy, you know different chapters of the Bible? I say, no, I only know like John three sixteen and the Genesis one one. Because.
Sorry, I feel like, um. I mean, the Lord is being ingrained in our relationships. And it is, it is breaking me. Yeah, I think that's the one, really breaking and forming me. With, I think, oh, we're good. But not like me, non-Christians, were better than them, and then the Lord says, we redeem ourselves, and we're like, oh my God, I'm worse actually. And, so this forced humility, yeah. The Lord is just convincing me and saying, even that in itself is pride. Because it means that. You don't want to, you don't want to, um, acknowledge the good things that God has put on the inside of you. And you'd rather let people believe that you are not up to that, just so that they can accuse or turn on you, or give it to you. Meanwhile, as they say, ah, you, and, 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 you, and you're saying, oh, the, the thing, when you're mad, you're like. I mean, yeah, yeah, but you, you know, you have deceit, but I just tell them, ah. Oh my God.
Exactly, exactly, I've done this thing, I, I see, I used to, this one, this was humility. I feel like there was a time in my life that I was like, I saw him. And I used to, I used to do it a lot, you know. You know, I just had this, I just had this, had this, I don't know, it was the same for everybody. I gave my life to Christ quite early. We're not early, early, like some other people, but it was still early, constantly. Although I was all like a sinner, sinner to begin with, like, I knew I was born in a Christian room and all that, and then. I was still a sinner anyway, but, at least I gave my life out to Christ like deliberately. I, I've been working in, you know, don't do this, don't do that, everything, but deliberately. Yeah, I think I, I gave my life to Christ quite early, so, but. I just feel like, most times when people are talking about, that was before, maybe, maybe till this night, yeah. So, I just feel like sometimes, in order not to sound like. A valley spiritual, or, or like. Or maybe because, you know, I don't, you don't want them to call you. Or churchgoers, or pastor, or you don't want them to start asking you to be leading one of you days, you just try to. You know, I was somewhere one day, I don't know, this was in ninth years, I was in like part four or part five. I remember this, that, I remember this very incident, so. I just felt like, okay, that, the way these people are putting eyes on me like this, and then I want to make me a school or something. I was just feeling it in my heart, so I just decided that, okay, this is what I'm going to do, to escape this. I'm going to make sure that I act as you. I don't really know anything about Bible and all that. So one day they were quoting, eh, that letter was besitting, besitting with salt. So, when they asked me, I was like, eh, letter was besitting with fire, no, with pepper. I can't remember what I said, I think it's. It's with, um, whether fire or pepper or something, I can't say something now, so. I was comfortable with them feeling, seeing me like, very unserious Christian, just because I wanted to have more responsibility, that was it. Because I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't feel like, I wasn't interested, so I, I, I kept that up actually, like. Through school, I did, you know, in ninth years, in ninth years, we used to do, um, this, um, if you want to join the workforce. If you enter ninth years, you have to do this believers class. I did believers class four times, no, not four times, four years. First semester, second semester, first semester, second semester, I, I started in P D degree, I finished it in part three, second semester. Because once we start like this, eh, I will just drop out. Then I will start again the next semester, so I did it like. That's first semester, second semester, first semester, second semester, first semester, that was like eight times. You know, the funny part is that, when I go to part two, they started a history for me. Like, they would just come in that, uh, believers class has started. And I, 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 I did like eight times, so. Everybody in fellowship just said that this guy is not a serious Christian, and I was comfortable. I was like, just. I was just comfortable with that, so I just feel like, this is funny, I was a Christian, but I was doing that, then they like, I was doing that. And he's, God is open all of us, God is open all of us, God is open us, God is open us. Forced humility is pride, forced humility. Is pretense, is as bad as being a modra. Is as bad, like, like Mario said, is in the way, in the way you are not acknowledging the good things that God has, you are ungrateful. It's just what it is, you're a very ungrateful person. A very ungrateful person, imagine somebody gives you a car, somebody gives you a car. Then the next day, in the person's presence, somebody asks you if you have a car, you say, no. How do you think the person that gave you the car will feel? Because most times, we, we try to look at it from our point of view, they're not looking at it from the point of view of the person that has given us this gift. I'm looking at the point of view of the person that has given us this. Or look at it this way, I give you fifteen, I, I sent you fifty k, just now, 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 now. I just, now, now, somebody came to come to me, and I just say, please, I don't care, shh, 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 you won't turn around like this, and even last I go to the house. How do you, how do you think the person that gave you that fifty k, you're just looking at you like, this is the last time. If you can collect it back, when you collect it. So that's exactly what we do when we don't. Exactly, never again, exactly, so most times, when we, when we, when we, when we, when we do, when we act this way. They are not acknowledging the good things that God has, and not acknowledging the good things that God has. Betrayed on the inside of us, because the truth is that he has given each one, each one of us, he has given each one of us gifts, has given each one of us. Graces, he has given each one of us talents. I don't know about you, but this night has been very, very impactful for me.
It has been more than impactful, it has drawn my hair, it has drawn my wig. Oh, my God. Convicted me, I think that's the proper words, I mean. Um, I was just thinking in my head that, if you're reading the Word of God, and all that, you can think of this. Oh, my Lord God, oh, so sweet, oh, so romantic, you, uh, you are joking. But Joker, you're like Joker, you're like Joker. If you're studying the Word of God, and you're just saying, oh, I'm just gonna bask in the love, who's gonna? Please, sit down, pass it down, I think you are. Yeah, I'm joking, oh, I mean, um, yes, I mean, the Word of God is complete, and has, I think it's first fourteen, then two sixteen, I think it's. Saying now that says, um, the Word of God is from, I mean, is for, is for correction, is for doctrine.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm scooting them personally. Because it is, it is important to not always see God as our sugar daddy, that just gives us money. Every time that we want it, and doesn't care about the development of our character, our spirit, why. And he's just here to lavish money and love on us, that's not, that's not the case, because if we truly must be sons. Not just, you know, children of God and like that, you know, now in the kingdom, if we truly must be sons, as in. A child who has matured, who has matured enough to inherit, you know, the properties of his father. If we truly must be sons, then we must be. Children of God who can be prepared by his word. We must be humble enough to allow the word, we believe our innocence, we believe our shortcomings. We believe our foolishness to us, that we know, that we can grow. Because, again, if you keep thinking we are. All the things that we think we have, we have learned. I don't know if you don't know.
Yes, yes, I am, I am, it's a new repast. Yeah, lots of times.
Thank you so much, I, I, I don't know, I don't even think blessed is one. I don't think blessed is the one, I just want to repent, I'm not really joking, like, I was in the bus, and I was. Almost tearing up, like, God, I'm sorry, I am so sorry. You mean, I mean foolish, wow, I'm so sorry. I mean, sometimes, we even know these things, but it, it is not very aware in our, in our spirits, it's not very aware in our minds. And we end up forgetting it, and behaving, yeah, that's the word. Um, and sometimes we don't actually, just thinking, oh, I don't, I don't, I tell that, I don't, I don't. Look at somebody who's been, I'm fine. Everyone has begun to admit to that, I believe that, you know. Based on what we have learned so much, based on what we have felt, based on what we have, um, been taught. Through dummy's mouth, or through his spirit. Based on what we have seen, and we have been, I don't know about you, but I believe that we are very confident. I believe they were being confident, I believe they were. And it is foolishness to be in a moment of confusion, actually, that is demanding, to be in a moment of confusion and confusion. In a sense, utter evil. Do you know, depends on constitution, do you know where you are, for your choice, you know where you have been. Even where you have been, of course, where you have been outscored, where your character has been outscored. Where you behave, or are still outscored. Have this, you know, what, sorry, it has become a mirror that they want to show you affection. And you know, you know, I want to bring it to you, Lord, I repent, I repent of it. I repent of the God, I repent of the times that I thought I could do these things on my own. I repent of the times that I was, I would be saying, oh, because I'm busy, I was rushed out to do this, and I would just be carrying out life on my own. I repent of the times that I could make it do my own strength. I repent of the times that you wanted to carry me and give me speed, but I chose to reveal my own weakness instead, because that's what it is. I repent, I repent, I repent, I repent, I repent of the times that I did not live with you, that I did not. No, that I did not have my being in you, the times that I did not depend on you, that I thought that my own strength could carry me. I repent, I repent, I repent, I repent of the times that I have to be what I'm not supposed to be, what I am not, what I know that I'm not. Please, man, I repent, I repent, I repent, I repent of some of what we need to pay for. Taking validation from men, oh, this person has not, I have not, that has not validated me, that has not approved, that I'm not good. I repent of the truth, I look after men to validate me, I repent, I repent, I repent, I repent. I repent of the times that I found, I was finding love in the, in the, in the cookiest place. I repent, I repent of all the idols that are placed in my life, I'm looking for, but I repent. I repent, I repent, I repent of the times that I have lost my strength, my arm of flesh, oh, I repent, I repent. I repent of the times that other things, and other people. I repent, I repent, I repent, for some of us is that, oh, we are burdened of something, and the first person we go to is our, is the love of the Lord, the love of the Holy Spirit. We, we repent, we repent, we repent, we repent. Like, every time that we have lived in life, and it's just, it's time to tell me, thank you. We repent, we repent, we repent, we repent, yes, we repent, please have mercy on us, have mercy on us. Have mercy on us, have mercy, we know, we know, we know, we know that it is by your mercy that we are. We know, we're going to receive now, we can receive, we can receive, but that, that, that protection. It's not just grace, even, even in our weaknesses, even in our foolishness. Because even Lord is, comes in, he is, he will stand, he will stand, really, who will stand? Many times that we have made ourselves any piece of God without knowing. And we have put his presence, he would open his arms and welcome us, like, he never did those stupid things. Ah, Lord, we, we, Lord, we repent. Yes, we know that we, we have received grace, we know that your grace is so chivalrous, but we will not be foolish and think, yeah, there is nothing more. Yes, that we have been without insult, in, in, in this area of our life, I will repent, I repent, I repent, I repent, oh God. And Father Lord, would just ask that he would help us, that he would help us, that he would help us, oh God, that he would help us. That your labors over us will not be in vain, that the labor of Christ over us will not be in vain, that he will be formed, he not complete and perfect. In the name of Jesus, so that when you return, oh God, you will return for a bride that is ready. You will return for a bride that is ready, you will return for a bride that is ready. Oh, Lord, help us, give us the strength, because it is you who works in us to will and to do. Give us the will, oh God, and give us the doing power, give us the will, Father, give us the will, give us the will. We want to know what's on your heart, we want to be your friend, we want to, we want to please you, we want to serve you, we want to bless you, I both. Think I, everyone, oh God, we want to, we want to bring pleasure to you, we want to bring pleasure to you, we don't want to be your enemy. We want to be your friends, we want to be your friends, we don't just want to extend by grace, that's the way it is, we want to bring. We want to be fruitful, we want our lives to tell that indeed, there is a transformation that has happened, we be that the call of Jesus has our Lord as. Lord, help us, God, help us. Oh, we ask that the Holy Spirit, not Jesus, that times when we begin to, when we obey heed to our kernel of mind, and we need to go our street. The Holy Spirit knocks sense, and puts us in the right path again, oh God. And we ask for, we ask for strength, we ask for grace, we ask for empowerment. That we may indeed live in your life, that we may indeed live in the life of God, that God may be in our life. That in our behaviors, in our characters, in our thoughts. That in our behaviors, in our characters, in our thoughts, in our speech, in our actions. God may be glorified. Oh, God may be glorified. Ay, God may be glorified. What's still in my heart right now is that when, when we think of, oh, that God may be glorified, you think of, okay. God will be thinking, because it's happening all the same. But the Holy Spirit is, you know, bringing into my heart now, that it's not just that. It is also that God is exalted in the midst of our conversation. We're not putting God down, we're not saying, oh, God aside, we're not, we're not ridiculing God, we're not bringing down the image of God, because we want to praise Him. So that at the end of our conversations, at the end of our actions, even with ourselves, that going to be exalted. That we, that we walk from that perspective, that we talk from that perspective. And we will not, we will not just say, oh, because, you know, I don't want to be too spiritual, oh, I don't want to make them think that I just go to church, you know. That God may be exalted in our conversations. I don't know why I keep repeating that, that God may be exalted in our conversations. That God may be exalted in our conversations. Lord, help us, help us, help us, help us. Help us, help us, help us, help us. Help us, we want to, we want to honor you, we want to honor you with the way that we see, with things that we see. With the way that we watch the things that we watch, with the way that we do the things that we do. In the friends that we keep, in the companies that we keep, in the work that we do, in the walks that we take. Lord, we want to honor you, we want to honor you, we want to exalt you over the rest. Lord, help us, not help us, not help us, not help us, we ask that you help us. Help us, oh God, help us, oh God, help us, help us, help us, without name, we can do nothing. Beauty, beauty, you, our feelings is stinking. Without you, we know that you are the goodness that runs off on us, and the goodness that brings me down. You have been grace, you are, you are the one who supplies grace for us to, to do. To not be asked that you help us. We're not relying on our, we're not even relying on our knowledge. For this, for this, I was telling you. We're not relying on our knowledge, it's not like, oh, we know that. We're relying on you, we're relying on you, we are relying on you, more to the man who's strength is the man. We are relying on you, Jesus. That you did help us to live the life that you call us to. Help us to live that, help us, help us, Jesus. That we be pure in hearts, that our hearts may be holy. Or we be pure in hearts, that our hearts may be holy. That we will not swear deceitfully, we will not meet of vain hands, oh God. That our hands may be holy and our hearts may be pure. Oh, keep us from, keep us, keep us, oh God, that we can expand the world in our hearts. And, oh God, I just pray for that. Actually, I want to submit a text, I just pray for that. I just felt very strongly that we should. And which of my peace, peace, God. I'm just, because. He, he has renewed himself very soon. As God's, and it is interesting that, I mean, what if we have canceled? Lord. What if we had canceled? What if I just said, oh, you know, it's okay, yeah, it's all, everybody comes to me, it's, let's just go away. Like, it is interesting how God works, it is interesting how God just does this thing. So, Lord, we thank you for your song, we thank you for your song. We thank you for your song, oh God, we thank you for your song, we thank you for your song, thank you for. For yourself that you are forming. We thank you, Father, we thank you for tonight, we thank you for using him as an impression of water. We thank you for the water that you pour out to us today. We thank you for his implorateness, we thank you, we thank you for the grace and the song, but we thank you for the oil that you poured. For tonight, for tonight, we know that you are mighty, and we thank you for the mighty for tonight. We thank you, thank you for this time. But we pray that your hands will be pure like this. We pray that your oil will forever be holy, much more than. Oh, in the name of Jesus, we pray, oh God, that your hand, your hand, your hand, your hand will be. Your hand will be, your hand will be, your hand will be. Oh, in the name of the Lord Jesus, your hand will be, in the name of the Lord Jesus, your hand will be. In the name of Jesus, we thank you, because even as much as water does, like you would want to hear. In the name of Jesus, like a well-tended garden. Your hand will be in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, like the dean. Of hermon falling on Mount Zion, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, the Lord, this is blessed. In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. The scripture that just came to my heart now was one, one. Like the dean of hermon falling on, on the mountains of Zion, who bare the Lord of the street blessing in life. This is your caution, in the name of Jesus. The dean of hermon, as the dean that descended upon the mountains of Zion, the dean of the Lord has commanded him, he is evil. Life, from, from this is his life. And he flows into every areas of the whole life, in the name of Jesus. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, everyone, thank you so much, darling, we are truly grateful, thank you so much. I know that it is not convenient because it's also weighed down, um, and we have to, you know, we should just do this, but. I mean, thank God for honoring his promises. Um, thank you, everyone, thank you so much for joining us, fighting. Forward a big, big time. God bless you, I know that you are blessed, God bless you forever. Um, see you tomorrow. If you have any questions. Sorry, I don't make. Anything you want to share, we will. Anything at all, a question, um. Something that was in your heart, probably. Um, and if you'd rather type it, I mean, but I think I'm going to work that, um. Wrong link here, I don't think anybody will inform us to tell you about. Um, so, yeah, well, I mean, if you have anything that you want to share, you know. Because I, I know that this conviction will break our hearts. Still true, you know, want to ask some things or say some things, so you can, you can ask me on whatever. Um, we continue to work by grace for the rest of the year, please, by. Invite the people that you know. To invite people that are not the commenters, join the comments. Um, thank you so much, thank you so, so much. God bless you, have a rest. Good night.
Good night.